The meeting of the Marquette City Commission is called to order on Monday, December 11th, at 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Ottoey?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protam Handling?
Here.
And Mayor Davis?
Here.
Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. I'm looking for an approval or a motion for approval. Commissioner Larson?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Commissioner Ottoey?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Anyone? Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries, seven zero. I want to just take a moment to acknowledge the passing of one of our previous mayors. Bob Neamy passed away on December 2nd. He served six years on the City Commission, one year as Mayor Protam and another year as Mayor. He also served six years on the Board of Light and Power. You know, personally, I always remember him for his kindness, his commitment to the community, and his sense of humor. So my condolences to his family, and I think we have another loss to our community. I also have an announcement. The Planning Commission will be conducting a hearing on Tuesday, December 19th, for a requested special land use permit for the expansion of an existing marijuana-growing operation at 1917 Enterprise Street, in which the applicant, North Coast Cultivators, is seeking a marijuana grower Class C license, which allows the license holder to cultivate not more than 2,000 marijuana plants and sell or otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments. The applicant was approved in 2021 for a marijuana grower Class B license and SLUP, which allows for the cultivation of not more than 500 marijuana plants and to sell or otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments. The meeting will begin at 6:00 here in the City Hall, the Commission chambers. So that's it for announcements. Commissioners, we have some reappointments to boards and committees. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Ottoey?
I move to reappoint Carrie Gottlieb to the Planning Commission for a term ending 2/15/27, Allison Clark to the Downtown Development Authority for a term ending 1/1/28, and Sean Hobbins to the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board for a term ending 12/31/26.
And Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Okay, comments?
None at all, except thank you.
Yeah, same here.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Which brings us to public comments, and comments may not exceed more than three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address, and if you care to make a public comment, step up to the podium.
I figured, this is Susan Essler, and my address is 342 West Bluff Street. Since I've seen some of you out in the wild at different events and things, I thought this would be a great opportunity to come in, just kind of update you on some of the things that Travel Marquette has been doing, and some accolades that the city of Marquette and Marquette area has received. On November 9th, the Board of Travel Marquette approved $73,000 in sponsorship for 36 local events. We'll have a second round of events. We've decided to do this instead of just, you know, just doing it where we would do it with each meeting. So the next meeting that we'll be having, where we'll be looking at different events, will be in April, and that is up on our website. If anybody is interested, please let me know. Also, Dave Lorenz, the longtime director for Travel Michigan, is retiring. He's been with the MEDC for 21 years, and so he will be ending his tenure at the end of December. So we're sad to see him leave, but interested to see where the direction goes for Travel Michigan. We have also been, Marquette Mountain has been named by Thrillist as 10 notable ski resorts for beginners. So that just came out today. And then, I think I told some of you last week in USA Today, we are one of 10 U.S. destinations most likely to have a white Christmas, and we're actually number four. So Fairbanks, Alaska with 100%, Duluth, Minnesota with 92.2%, Bozeman, Montana at 91.1%, Fingers Crossed, Marquette, Michigan, 88.2%. So we're hoping for a white Christmas. We'd love to see some snow. Well, maybe some of us would. And so that's all I have to update you today. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I want to say those are great accolades, and I'm glad we live here. I'm glad I live here. Glad we can do what we can. There's always room for improvement. And so I guess I'm usually contentious, and I don't want to be tonight. I really want to say thanks for everybody who did their time and put your time and effort into it. But I was up here last time, last meeting, and you guys, like, denied somebody a special permit for putting in landscaping rocks at their driveway. And you cited following the rules and making sure that we follow the rules appropriately. I want to say it's written in the rules that you guys are the ones that make us a unique town. You're the ones who approve a one-off, design flaw, or problem. But when you tell us that, hey, it's using 13% of the land, and we don't know if we've given a permit for that, I know of houses that share a driveway. And so when you say we in Marquette have to follow the Planning Commission rules, I'm really curious why. Why it's not, I mean, across the board. But again, if it's a mistake, why can't we come to you and ask for permission? I mean, that's what I see you guys as. That's why I ran for your seats. And so in the same sense, Mr. Ottoey, you kept talking about being 13%. I got 500 votes in the election that put you in that seat. You didn't get 500 votes, but yet I'm not sitting there. So the rules of election democracy kind of states I should probably be more likely to sit there. That rolls over to the Board of Light and Power decision that you're making tonight. I'm glad to see somebody stepped up and wanted to be part of it. It's disappointing. It was only one name on the list, which by all means, he's more than capable of doing the job, and I look forward to seeing what they can do. In that sense, since we've got everybody here with the Board of Light and Power public, how does the new rules, the new laws from the state about power generation affect us having a monopoly that is the Marquette Board of Light and Power? I mean, there are no other local electrical power companies that can operate in here because our charter denies it. And yet, we have members who are being appointed to the seat. Could this whole process be shut down because they have to become an actual, what you call it, business entity? I'm wondering if all these questions, if Mr. Schlegel, since you were just there during that time period, could you help us out with this? I'm curious, because could it open up the Innovation Center at Northern? Could we in fact see more smaller power companies supplying? Again, my last power source was five kilowatts a day is the average. I think we can come up with companies that can do that, and I'd like to hear some of your answers. Thank you for...
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Couple weeks ago, I was here, and this podium said to the people behind the table that I was looking for speakers to come to speak to my class in business law at Northern Michigan University. And the reason I wanted speakers is I wanted them to hear from someone other than me. And I wanted to come here tonight to say what happened and how the students viewed the speakers. The first class, we had Mayor Davis and Mr. Dave Campana, who used to be mayor and is now on the Board of Light and Power. And we had Dave Stensis, who's the city, I don't know his title, is it land planner? Or, anyway, they came three at a time. And then the next day, Commissioner Ottoey and City Manager Karen Kovacs came and talked to another group of students. And if it were up to the students, I believe the five of you would be teaching that class, as the comments I received back were, "Mr. Stensis knows a lot about the Constitution and people's property rights. You should have had him come in earlier in the year when you were talking about the Constitution." And I just wanted him to know, even though he's not here, I've already booked him for next semester. Two weeks, we talk about the Constitution, because they were very impressed with his knowledge of property rights. He absolutely wowed them by knowing about a sign on the campus of Northern that had issues as well. The city manager came in and talked about the different paths she took to get to her current position. And Jeremy Ottoey sat in a chair and talked about the different ways things can get destroyed by nature, and how you have to read your policy, and it doesn't always cover anything. And he certainly recommended that everybody had renters' insurance, which caused several of my students to go faint and check their phones. Mayor Campana and Mayor Davis teamed up to educate my students that there is no one path forward in life, and that everybody takes different paths. And that, I did the write-ups, and I delivered them tonight, and the vast majority of my students would hire these five people if given the chance to. However, there is one issue they all flunked out on that they would not be hired for. I'm sorry to have to tell you this. I have one student in my class who's in Northern Cybersecurity program, and he was reluctantly, he would not hire you because you just didn't have the right background in cybersecurity. That was an opportunity for improvement I thought I would share with all of you. Needless to say, you made one incredibly positive impression upon my students, and I'm very, very grateful that you showed up. And of course, you get rewarded by being asked again. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, see none. Public comment is now closed, and we will move on to our presentation. Tonight, we have Downtown Development Authority by our Executive Director, Tara Lassie McKenney. Tara's coming up to the podium right now.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mayor, thank you so much for having me. My name is Tara Lass McKenney. I am the Executive Director of the Marquette Downtown Development Authority. Just as a side note, this is the first of two required public presentations that the DDA is required to give per year. The second one will be on Thursday morning at 8:00 AM at the Marquette Commons during our scheduled DDA Board meeting. So, oh, is it on? Okay. Yep, I will do that. Sorry about that. All right, so here we have, just talking a little bit about the DDA. We have our mission and our fundamental goals. I really want to focus on those fundamental goals, which are to increase property values, create and maintain a favorable business and investment environment, ensure the sustainability of the district, and support downtown property owners, businesses, professionals, and residents. We have a map here of our district that we cover. It is very large. We have many, many streets there that we cover, and we have six and a half miles of sidewalks that we take care of year-round. A little bit of background here. The DDA was established way back in 1976. We've had several different versions of our TIF development plan. We are in number three, or we are currently working on getting number four going. You guys will see that before too long here, in the next couple months. And then some fun statistics about the district itself. We have around 335 total businesses, around 200, or sorry, it's 2,650 employees and about 350 residents. We have a nine-member Board of Directors, eight of which are appointed by the City Commission. Thank you for approving one of those tonight. And the ninth seat being held by the city manager. We have a large staff there at the DDA, as well as quite a robust maintenance crew right now. Many of those are seasonal and part-timers, and we have several full-timers as well, all of which are really great employees. And really, getting back to one of our goals, is to sustain and improve the taxable value of the downtown district properties. And as you can see here, that is something we have been doing since our very first TIF in 1992. So those property values have continued to increase year over year. Except for one year in there, but that was an anomaly. Year over year, though, we have done a great job of that. So here is our annual report on and status of TIF and Development Plan Number Three. This is basically the same thing that we send off to the State Treasury every year to let them know that, hey, we're doing everything that we need to be doing. So it shows our revenue and our expenditures on there. This kind of illustrates what that chart before showed, that basically 54% of our revenue comes from TIF. 29% of our revenue comes from parking revenue. And then we have a smattering of other places where that revenue actually comes from. One thing to point out here is that we have a diversified revenue stream here. So we're not solely reliant on TIF. We are reliant on a lot of different revenue streams here. And then our expenditures here. 31% of that is personnel. Maintenance and operating is 18%. Capital projects and equipment is 20%. And then several other things there, paying off our bond principal, things coming in and out through, for the farmers market, different grants that we have as well. All right, so we'll get a little bit into parking here. As you can see, year over year, normally, we do not make money on parking. This was the first year we have actually made money on parking to the tune of just under $40,000. We expect that to not be the case for this current fiscal year. But that would be just because we expect to have some equipment we expect to have to purchase to, you know, just maintain those parking pay stations that we have. All right, so a little bit more about parking. We have eight parking lots. We got one extra one this year, plus the Bluff Street ramps. We have 781 off-street spaces. In the core downtown, we have 506 on-street parking spaces. On Third Street, we have 110 spaces, for a total of just under 1,400 spaces. We have 38 pay stations. We also have the Passport Parking App that people can pay through. And we have one dual-port electric vehicle charging station. Hopefully sometime this, early this next year, we get two additional Type III charging stations as well. Some achievements for 2023. We added 10 reserved parking spots to the Bluff Ramp lower level, which was really great. We had a lot of demand for that, so we were able to help out a lot of people with that. We gave out 10 employee parking grants for businesses with part-time employees to help support those part-time employees who needed a little extra help and couldn't necessarily afford a parking pass. We handed out quite a few Passport Parking App coupons for those off-season times to really help encourage locals to use that parking, that Passport Parking App. So that was really well, that went really well. And then, like I said before, we have now taken over management of the Pier Lot, Public Parking Lot, which is just south of One Marquette Place, and there's 17 additional spaces there. Some of our goals for 2024, continued downtown business grants and permits for part-time employees. We plan to add some curb cuts around for accessibility near on-street handicap parking spots. We are going to continue to explore future paid parking on Third Street. Going to keep working with the Savings Bank Development and the Vault Parking Structure, and we're going to continue to work on an operating agreement there and partner with Superior Watershed Partnership to get those two fast chargers installed at the Lake Shore Lot. Just as a reminder, what your parking money goes towards, snow removal and sidewalk clearing. Even though we don't have much snow yet, our maintenance guys have been out there working hard, putting down salt and sand to make sure that, even though there's only a little bit of snow out there, it does get really icy, so they're keeping that nice and safe for everybody. Parking lot maintenance year-round, whether it be snow removal in those parking lots or just, you know, upkeeping those parking lots themselves. The maintenance of elevators, stair towers, and the Bluff Street ramp. Just to let you know, elevators are very expensive, and they require a lot of upkeep. And line striping and lighting of all of our downtown parking lots. So all of that money just goes right back into our parking system. Speaking of maintenance and the great job that our guys do, they do all sorts of wonderful things. Summer landscaping and lawn care, winter plowing, shoveling, sanding, and salting, sweeping, trash removal, cleaning and cleaning, watering of the flowers that we put up throughout the downtown and up Third Street, flags and other seasonal decorations that we put up, hanging of holiday green baskets, installation of holiday lights, maintenance of the Marquette Commons, events and farmers' market setup and teardown. We couldn't do nearly as much as we do with our events and with our, with our farmers' market without the help of our maintenance guys. The Bluff Street ramp and parking lot maintenance, pay station maintenance, maintenance of elevators, and implementations of special projects. So they work really hard. If you see them, tell them thank you for all their hard work. And speaking of the farmers' market, we had a very active, very exciting year this last year at the farmers' market. As you can see here, we've had a greater number of vendors this year than we have before, and that is due in part because of the Wednesday market that we have implemented. You can see we have many more artisans this year than we have in the past, which, if you went to the Wednesday market, you definitely saw that there were quite a few artisans there. A lot more food producers as well, which is really great. We do have a few less farmers, which unfortunately, a few farmers did end up retiring or just didn't have prosperous enough yield of what they were growing to be able to come to the market. Our average number of visitors on Saturday continues to grow, which is really great. And of course, definitely the Wednesday market. The numbers definitely grew. There, we went from just a few hundred people per Wednesday market in years past to thousands of people on a Wednesday market, once we moved it to Washington Street. This shows market income. It has grown because of that Wednesday market as well. But not only that, we're looking at ways of diversifying that income stream as well. So we did bring in a lot more money this year for vendor fees, because we had a lot more vendors, especially because of that Wednesday night. We had roughly a 300% increase in the number of vendors that we had. But we also have gotten a lot of sponsorship fees this year, which has been really great. We had some unknown costs moving that Wednesday market, so we were able to help offset some of those unknown costs with sponsorship fees. One of the great things that the farmers' market does is it's really, we utilize food assistance. So we are able to help support farmers and food producers by us collecting those, those different food assistance types, and, you know, reimbursing those farmers. different food assistance types and, you know, reimbursing those farmers. But also, we are able to help those in the community who actually need that food assistance. So we're able to kind of move that money through. And as you can see, this year, we were able to give over $45,000, you know, to the community and put those, put that food into the hands of people and put that money into the pockets of farmers and food producers. We had a lot of really great events this last year. We had our downtown trick-or-treating. This last year, we're looking at fiscal year 2022, 2023 was the first year that we actually shut down the, the street for trick-or-treating, which was a really great success. And then this last fall went super well then as well, something that we plan and continue to, to do in the future because it has been so well received. Ladies Night Out last year, this year turned into Ladies Day, but it was still Ladies Night Out for last year. We had our holiday parade, then Restaurant Week, Art Week, all sorts of really, really great events that, you know, really bring a lot of people downtown and to see how wonderful our downtown is and to visit our wonderful shops and businesses that we have down there. We also raised money for different events there. We were able to raise money for the Women's Center on several different occasions, so it's always a good time. We also have other events that we support through local event partnerships, UP200, Angry Bear, Queen City Half Marathon, the Marquette Marathon, the Margie Gessick, the 50-mile version of that race, and New Year's Eve Ball Drop. So we work really closely with all of these different organizers to help make sure that they can bring their events to downtown, have a great time, and really showcase how great downtown is. Some of the ways that we were able to support downtown businesses this year, just one of the many ways that we were able to, is through match-on-main grants. We assisted two different downtown businesses in being awarded and completing $25,000 match-on-main grants. So Great Northern Title completed their grant in August and they did close to 200, actually over $200,000 in renovations to the inside of their business. It's fabulous looking. If you have not been there, I definitely recommend taking a stop-by, saying hi. It looks beautiful there and they're great members of our downtown business community. As well, Velodrome Coffee Company was also awarded a $25,000 match-on-main grant and they moved their shop up to North Third Street to a much larger space. So we were able to help them get that $25,000 grant so that they were able to purchase new equipment and new furniture for the inside of their building, as well as put in a small compost area, a small little garden there so that they can kind of grow some of the things that they use in their drinks there. As well as Ordoc Brewing Company also finished up their grant that they had been awarded, I think a year and a half ago. So very successful in that front. We also welcomed 11 new businesses to downtown. Really fun variety of businesses from, you know, a boudoir photography shop to KMI that sends rockets into space to collect space junk. So a huge variety of different businesses there in downtown. Unfortunately, we did say goodbye to a few businesses, but I do know, for instance, that Rotations Deli does have a new business going in there very soon and hopefully we'll be able to fill those other storefronts as well pretty soon. So some other DDA accomplishments from 2023. We had our social district implementation back in June. That has been very well received by the community. We've had no incidents that I am aware of as far as that one, so that's been very successful. Lots of positive feedback from our businesses that participate. I believe we have 17 that are participating. We had the implementation of our Wednesday evening market to Washington Street, making those Wednesdays in the summer a very, very lively and a lovely place to be on a Wednesday night. We took over the management of the Pier Lot and we made a significant investment in our maintenance and our snow removal equipment to make sure that we are keeping up with whatever weather comes our way and to make it easier for our maintenance guys to get out there and keep the sidewalks safe for everybody in downtown. So for our 2024 goals and objectives, we're going to continue to pursue a TIF district for Third Street corridor, like I said. Hopefully in the next month or two, we'll have that finalized. We're going to continue to collaborate on the Volt project and the development team with and with the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We're going to explore modifications to the Marquette Commons facility, placemaking initiatives, and some farmer's market suitability and upgrades. We want to make that facilities work just a little bit better for all of the things that we're using it for right now. And we're going to continue to seek grant fundings for public improvement projects and to assist property owners with making property improvements. We still have our facade grant out there. It's still available for businesses in the downtown and we're going to keep looking for other grant opportunities. And we're going to continue to work towards a wayfinding signage program. That's something that has been talked about a lot year over year and it's something we think is really important to get going in the next, in the next year, so. And that is where we're at. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Tara.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, comments or questions for Tara? Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, thank you, Tara. Big fan of the DDA, I mean, for years. You know, 1976 wasn't that long ago. So I know, just saying it's not that old, even if you're a little older than 76, but anyway. Point is, is that, you know, you guys really do a great job of showcasing the downtown area and making it such an absolute gorgeous view when, when our visitors come into town. The upkeep, the maintenance is really to be commended, let alone the retention of businesses and helping those businesses with the improvements. Just, I want to say thank you so much for, for the work that, that your crew's doing and pass it along.
Certainly.
One question I would have is the lines that are for parking spaces, especially on Third. Do you guys actually take care of that or is that the city's job? And maybe I'm asking the wrong side.
So, yeah, anything that's on the street is responsibility of the, of the city itself. But we do pay to have those stripes.
Our, our crew takes care of that, our city crew.
Are you speaking specifically about Third Street then?
Yep.
Yep, and that has been one that we're trying to discuss.
Yep.
Either restriping or painting the lines or whatnot, but there are some thoughts on that for, for long-term planning as well.
And I'm sure that within those plans, you're looking at, there's a difference between who can do what. I know there's short, the, the parking space lines are get done by our guys, the long lines get done by the long line crew that gets brought in. So there's all different types of, you know, who can do what there, but especially the bike lane, if we're going to keep the bike lane the way that it is, those things, you know, they obviously need to be spruced up a little bit, but I, I just, that's just me being picky, but I just want to thank you for what you do for those businesses.
For sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the work you do, the events, the sprucing up of downtown that really make our community have that character that you can't put your finger on. I mean, you can, but it's like, why do people love it? Well, we have a vibrant area where we can gather and have music and food and shopping and business. So thank you for promoting that. Was it about maybe this time last year or a little bit after we were debating on the Wednesday night farmer's market? I'm so glad it was so successful. I was one who was very hesitant and you saw the vision and well done because that was incredible. It really brought a lot of people out on a night that they probably wouldn't have otherwise, so. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Otteaway?
Tara, thank you, your presentation as usual. I will say, just first a comment, I, I think people take for granted how great of the DDA Marquette actually has when you compare it to everything that goes on in the state. Somebody that really knows firsthand about that is our own city manager. She's kind of explained that to you and me and everyone else that, that's willing to listen to that on numerous occasions. And I think a lot of the success you're having is, is also because of the relationship you continue to have with her. So I think that is wonderful and I love seeing that. I'm hoping you can talk about two things that, that struck me during your presentation. First, I love seeing the, the diversity in revenue. I think that's so important from a DDA standpoint. We can't just, you know, have you getting stuck on needing TIF and needing to survive only based on that. And really, in, in the time I've, I've been aware and been affiliated with the DDA and now in the commission, that number on the, on the chart for TIF has actually shrunk and you guys are actually bringing in revenue in other places. So first, if you could talk about maybe some other revenue you're looking at in the future or other ways that that pie maybe is going to start shrinking even more on the TIF side? And then second, if you could talk about the farmer's market a little bit, what the, what the future holds for the Sun, or Saturday market. Obviously, there's, there's issues with sizing there. It's growing way, way faster, I think, than, than we would have ever thought, you know, prior to COVID. And I'm just interested to hear about what your visions may be.
Sure, well, I'll take the last one first. So as far as the farmer's market goes, we are definitely at a point right at this moment where, you know, we're busting at the seams, basically. So the Saturday market, we don't foresee that growing anytime soon. There's really no more room for that to expand. We've taken a few of the spaces out of the parking lot to kind of add in a few more vendor spaces, but we're really, we're really at a max there. So I know that Sarah Johnson, the farmer's market manager, is focusing now, in the short term at least, on making sure that there are really good quality vendors there that, that keep coming back. We have really, really great vendors there now, so we just kind of want to maintain that high level of quality and make sure that it's, it's a really good farmer's market. Long-term, what we are looking at is potentially figure out a way to redevelop that plaza or potentially, you know, look to areas around there to see if there isn't a better space to better accommodate the market. Right now, the, the plaza at the Commons, you know, it was initially built as a, a ice skating rink, really doesn't work for that anymore, unfortunately. So it does retain a lot of water. If you were at the Saturday market, I stopped by there and there's just inches of water just standing around because it had been raining the night before. And so everybody's kind of trudging through a puddle there. So it just isn't really working well for that. So we're, we're still exploring grants or potential opportunities that can allow us to redevelop that and make it much more useful for the community and what we're using it for now. As far as other, you know, general, through the DDA, diversifying our, our revenue streams in general, I might believe it's the Michigan Downtown Association recommends, you know, diversified streams of revenue for downtowns, somewhat similar to the numbers that we have right now, at least, if not greater, where, you know, at least like, you know, a third is coming from somewhere other than TIF. So we, we're definitely accomplishing that. But some of the other ways that we could definitely diversify that would be exploring more, more grant opportunities through the state and through the MEDC. There's often really great, excuse me, great grant opportunities out there that we're going to continue to explore. So just keeping our eyes peeled for things like that, that are going to work towards some of these bigger goals that we have.
The commissioners? Tara, thank you so much. We certainly do have a robust DDA and I really appreciate your leadership in the whole DDA and, and its expansion. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Commissioners, we are moving along to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
And Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Okay, discussion?
I have no discussion, other than this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you.
Anyone? Okay. City Clerk, would you conduct the roll call vote?
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteaway?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to unfinished business, the sale of city property 600 West Spring Street. City Clerk, could I have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city issued a request for proposals on July 19th, 2022, based upon city commission direction to seek middle, missing middle housing at a higher density for the vacant city-owned parcel located at 600 West Spring Street. The city received one proposal from Marquette County Habitat for Humanity in response to the RFP. The proposal was subsequently amended following in-depth conversation about developing the site. The final proposal was for eight single-family homes for households between 30% and 60% of the poverty threshold in Marquette County that meet the Marquette County Habitat for Humanity requirements. The city commission approved a resolution of intent to sell for this property at their December 12th, 2022 regular meeting. Following this meeting, the city manager opened negotiations with Habitat and approved a right-of-entry permit to allow access to the property to conduct an environmental review. Upon completion of this review with minimal findings and an appraisal, the city manager has negotiated a purchase price of $123,200, 80% of the appraised value. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $123,200 in revenue from the sale of the property. Recommendation, approve the resolution of sale of parcel 0240012. Authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and authorize the city manager to complete the sale according to the terms of the purchase agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
May I have a motion? Protem Hanley?
I move that we approve the resolution of sale of parcel 0240012. Authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and authorize the city manager to complete the sale according to the terms of the purchase agreement.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Protem Hanley?
Uh, yes, I do have a little bit. I, I don't know, Madam Mayor, if anyone's here from the Habitat.
Do we have anyone? Yes. Do you care to step up to the podium for privileged comment, please?
Thank you.
And if you could state your name.
Yes, my name is Richard Graybill. I'm an attorney. I'm also on the board of directors of the Habitat affiliate.
Hi, thank you so much. I just have a few questions, just from looking at the plans. One of the weird ones that I thought about because of the time of year it is, is do you have a plan for snow removal or where the snow will go? Looking at that plot of land and where it's at, there's not a lot of places to put it, so.
Yes, we have talked about that and we will work out a, a plan for where to plow snow when, when it comes.
Absolutely. I'm sure it will come. It always does. Another thing is I noticed the size, that there's eight houses. Do you guys have a general size for each, what the square footage will be of each of these houses?
Yes, they, they will be the standard Habitat for Humanity size house. There could be a two-story. Most of them will be one, one-story. The one-story houses will range around 1,000 to 1,200 square feet and a two-story house will be a little larger than that.
Awesome. And then with the parking, is there room in each of the driveways that I noticed there for two cars or is it just room for one car?
Two cars.
Awesome.
Just two cars.
Just two cars. Perfect. Other than that, I was just wondering, and I know you probably don't have an answer, do you happen to know when you plan on starting the build-out process for this? Do you guys have a timeline?
We have it scheduled to commence construction this summer on two houses. It'll take, we're going to phase it in over a period of time and our first phase will be two houses.
Awesome, that sounds great. Thank you very much. I have no more questions.
While you're up there, does anyone else have questions for Mr. Graybill? Yes, Commissioner, my, Mayor?
Just a follow-up of what you were just talking about. For all eight houses being built, what is the timeline for that?
We will do that at the rate of two houses a year. That's our standard, what we've been doing in the last several years is two houses a year. And so it'll take four years to complete the, the project.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions for Mr. Gray? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mr. Gray. What is, and first of all, I'm a big fan of what Habitat does for, for people in the community to obtain housing. What are the responsibilities of the future homeowners as far as time goes with that building? How, is there an expectation of how long they're, they're supposed to stay in that building before it's sold again? And then is there any kind of a?
You're talking about these restrictions?
No, I'm talking about just money, you know, because, you know, I understand how the process goes for these people to get into the building. They put the sweat equity into it and it's great. Same time, after four years, the equity in that home is substantially more with the way that the property values go in the city Marquette. Is there, is there any kind of restriction for them to sell and all of a sudden that house is no longer within that, the pre- house is no longer within that, the parameters of what we would say affordable housing?
Yes. In the mortgage that they will sign, there is a trigger mechanism that if they sell, and I think, I believe, I'm not positive, but I believe it's in five years of the acquisition of the house, they forfeit all the equity. Or I shouldn't say they forfeit it. They, they lose their equity. They will, they will, after the, the waiting period, the recapture period is what we call it, they then can phase in with equity up to 10 years.
Okay. Thank you. It was a really important question for me to understand better, so thank you. Also, back to the, the topic of, you know, workforce housing. My concern is that we have very little property available in the city of Marquette to build these types of units or high-density type units. My, you know, after going, doing, excuse me, time's getting tied up. After doing another site visit today, I understand, and I'm all for this type of development, if we can do, you know, zero setback or very tight development so that we get higher density numbers there. But personally, I mean, looking at the site and sites that are not too far from there, I would feel that the, the use, when they're asking for, what was the term, was just higher-density housing, that if we're talking three to four people in a house this size, times eight, you know, we're talking, let's say, 30 to 40 people. Wouldn't, wouldn't a higher-density structure make more sense, in my personal opinion, to where we would be able to have 30 or 40 units that could each house three to four people, however that would work? So, not that I'm against, I'm, I'm glad that you guys brought it up, and I realize it's probably not in your wheelhouse to build such a, a system versus what you do here. When I see these go, go up, you know, as you build them. But personally, with the amount of space that we have available to us, I personally would think that it would make more sense to build a higher-density structure. Now, we didn't have anybody come in when the RFP went out with anything with that. That being said, you know, zoning was different across the street, in that big lot, then things could potentially move over there from my, it's my understanding, and do some higher-density building over there. But, you know, just because we only have one offer for this property, I'm not quite sure if this is the best use for that property, especially considering that we also have a very important entity right next door with Beacon House. You know, they've been an incredible contributor to patient care in, in the UP, and it's my understanding that their volume of occupancy is anywhere from 80 to 100%, and that certain times they're putting people into local hotels versus their own unit that they, I've been told also, that we're hoping to expand on, on that space. So, you know, I guess it's all about tax dollars. We want to see those things, but I really want people to take a hard look at this and say, you know, is there something, is this the right time to develop this property in this way? Thank you.
I really only wanted to, one, give the commissioners a chance to ask questions of Mr. Graybill at this point. Any other commissioners? You do have one?
I do have one.
Yes.
Mr. Graybill, thank you for, for being here. When it comes to what the plans were as far as the, the length and the time of the build, obviously, two, two homes a year is, is kind of what you guys are looking at.
Yes.
Based on that timeline, do we have, does Habitat have any other homes that they're going to be building in the interim that would delay the, the construction of the site?
No, that is our building project, our projected building project for the next four years.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, I believe you were the second on that motion, so comments?
I was, thank you, Mayor. I guess I would say that the City Commission did go through a process for requests for proposals as the agenda item states, July 19th, 2022. We didn't get any other viable options, or this was the most viable option at that point in time. I understand your point, Commissioner Schlegel, but I personally would like to see us move forward on this to at least make an attempt to try and start somewhere with some of the affordable housing that we are sorely missing. I hear you. But I don't know of any other developer that's lining up, knocking on the door, waiting to get at that property right now, and to delay this in hopes that maybe something else might be out there. I'd rather I see us do something rather than nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Comments? Questions? Yes, Commissioner?
City Manager, could you please talk about the, the projected tax gain in this? I would appreciate that.
So it's hard to tell without knowing the value of the homes and what's built at that time, but we, it will be similar to the average homeowner or taxpayer. So it will bring in additional revenue to the city, and I know we had an estimate at one point, but because it has changed from 12 to, to eight, I cannot give you an accurate estimate on that one, but we would receive some of that as revenue.
Yeah, I mean, and I guess, would I be unrealistic in thinking that $2,000 per home is, is out of the question based off of what our current taxes are in Marquette?
And that would be based off of, that would be, if you take your taxable, 40% of that would probably be what you could safely say is the city's at that point.
Thank you. So ultimately, we're looking at $16,000 in taxable revenue that we wouldn't have had prior. To me, you know, one of the, one of the goals of the commission really is to start finding ways to bring in money. I've heard nothing but concern from citizens in the city of Marquette that we're not doing enough to actually bring in revenue, and people are getting upset because their taxes are continuing to go up. I think that putting this out for RFP as we did, finding a suitable buyer, has really possibly solved a problem that, that we have in the community right now when it comes to the, the cost of everything going up, including running the city. Because of that, I, I'm actually in support of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I'd like to just say, I'm, you know, looking at the, the background of it, the, the City Commission did pass a resolution of intent to sell this property back, you know, a year ago tomorrow. So, you know, I think moving forward, you know, with the past commission's, you know, plans, I think are, you know, important in this, in this instance, especially kind of given that, say, hey, we intend to sell it, and they've gone out and gone through their due process of design and otherwise. I would like to see these be two-story homes, similar to kind of the, the rendered drawings that have been, that were in our packet, you know, here today, rather than, you know, just single-story homes. But I'm also in support.
Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none. City Clerk, will you conduct the roll call vote?
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes. Motion passes six to one. Moving on to new business, we have the Board of Light and Power Board member appointments. City Clerk, could you give me some background?
Thank you, Mayor. A Board of Light and Power vacancy was created effective November 12th, following the resignation of then-member Paul Schlegel. The term for the now-vacant seat on the BLP extends until November of 2024. Under the provisions of the Marquette City Charter, Section 6-5, the City Commission has 60 days in which to fill this vacancy via appointment. The Commission voted unanimously on November 13th to accept applications from all interested parties and to consider the applications and appoint a new BLP member at tonight's meeting. The application was made available on the city's website and was also available for pickup at the city clerk's office and at the Marquette Police Department. Applications were accepted from November 14th until 4:00 PM on November 27th. In that time, the city clerk received one application for the position from Gerald Erby. The attached application has been reviewed, and staff has verified that Mr. Erby meets all eligibility requirements stipulated by the city charter. Separately, the remaining members of the Board of Light and Power discussed this topic at that board's November 28th meeting and recommended that the City Commission appoint Gerald Erby to the vacant seat. Fiscal effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Appoint Gerald Erby to fill the vacancy on the Marquette Board of Light and Power effective immediately. Alternatives: As determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I would like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Erby to the Board of Light and Power as stated, with much thanks.
And a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
I'd like to thank Mr. Erby for stepping up to the plate. There's a lot of going on over at the BLP, and I know that he's going to be a good fit for the position.
Okay, Mr. Otte, Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, just huge thank you to Jerry over there. He is, if you don't know Jerry, he's a pillar in the community that's been up here, been the mayor, he's been around the block. So to see him continuing to actually want to support the community and be out there, I think it's amazing. And nothing but thanks to you, sir. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Erby. If you would, please stay after our meeting tonight to get sworn in. We would appreciate it. Our last item for new business is a resolution to establish polling locations. And City Clerk, I need a background.
Thank you, Mayor. In November, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer signed Public Act 227 of 2023, which amended state election law to limit the number of registered voters residing in a single-election precinct to 4,999. Prior to this, the limit was set at 2,999. The city's election board on December 4th adopted a resolution amending the boundaries of Marquette's election precincts. This boundary change, which took immediate effect, lowered the number of precincts in the city from seven to four, and staff anticipates this shift will reduce the overall cost of elections by decreasing the need for supplies and equipment and by providing additional flexibility relative to staffing in the siting of polling locations. Per state law, quote, "The legislative body in each municipality shall provide a suitable polling place for each precinct located in the municipality for use on Election Day." In response to this new precinct alignment, staff is recommending the City Commission officially identify the polling locations to be utilized by city voters moving forward. Under the proposed alignment, voters from precincts one and two would vote in the Barrig Gym, and voters from precincts three and four would vote at the YMCA. The proposed alignment means that voters who were previously assigned to the polling location in the city's municipal service center, 13% of registered voters, will be assigned to the polling location in the YMCA. Fiscal effect: None. Recommendation: Adopt the resolution establishing polling locations for the city of Marquette's election precincts. Alternatives: As determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Pro Tem Hanley?
I move that we adopt the resolution establishing polling locations for the city of Marquette's election, election precincts.
And a second? Commissioner Larson?
I'd second that.
Okay. And comments?
I, I like that we are following the state law. I like that we're making it easier on our city clerk's office, and I think it'll be great having two polling locations established rather than three.
Commissioner Larson? Any other comments from the commissioner?
You're welcome, Kyle.
Okay, anything else? This is a roll call vote, so City Clerk, if you would conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. We are ready for our pub, our second public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address if you step up to the podium.
Thank you. Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, City of Marquette. I'm really here to, I guess, ask about Cliffsdale. At what point can we, the city residents, use Cliffsdale? I mean, it's all fenced in. I think we, the city, paid for that fence. I don't think that was done by the, what you call it, Verdia Group. Speaking of Verdia Group, what's going on with Spring Street parking structure or a parking lot? Is that sold? Is that not sold? Is that going to be a building? I didn't hear anything about it here tonight's DDA presentation, but here's the city, what's going on with the Verdia Group construction projects around town? One, the hospital, we see in action, but Cliffsdale was also sold to them, and Spring Street. So anyways, back to Cliffsdale. Can we use it? I mean, can we just use it as a little walking area? Can we, is the ground safe enough to walk on? I don't know if anybody's actually answered that, and I don't see why we can't use the land. It's vacant land. It's, it's open, it's been open to the city use for a good couple of decades. So I'm wondering why we have closed off an area that would be really safe for a lot of things, a lot of activities. Literally, just walking in a fenced-in area is a lot safer than walking on Lake Shore Drive with the bike path. The bike path is beautiful, don't get me wrong, but it's also somewhat open. You know, if you are walking a dog and they get away from you. Yes, there are laws about leashes and all that. But again, we could open this up for the next five years. I mean, I'm not talking forever, and this is a forever park, but until this gets figured out with whoever is taking it over, can we, as a city residents, use it for whatever we want? Or at least use it for parks and park recreation? I say this because there are places that we're confining a lot of people, like the parking, or the park that's down at Mattson Lower Harbor Park, Mattson Lower Harbor Park. We're confining a lot of people into that small space. We're making people come from north side of town to go downtown to park in one of those spaces in order to actually go and use a playground or an open space. Again, just open space. Not asking for big structures. I don't need a pavilion. There's no million-dollar expansion. It's literally been open to the city residents for yard waste. It's got plenty of flatland to park at. I'm just wondering, is it so contaminated that we can't use it? And at the same time, we've done the, or the environmental monitoring, but we've never talked about the surface environmental monitoring. Is it bad? I don't think it is, and I'd like to go use it. I'd like to go walk our dogs on it. I'd like to go and actually let kids play around without having to worry about the street. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
I'm bifurcating my remarks tonight. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic. I always say I'm only speaking on behalf of myself, but my first remarks will be made on behalf of the Marquette Board of Light and Power, of which I currently am the vice-chair slash secretary. First of all, I'd like to welcome Mr. Erby to the Board of Light and Power. Look forward to seeing you. Our next meeting, in case you were wondering, is Tuesday, December 19th at 4:30 PM. You know the building. We look forward to seeing you. And thank you to the commission for appointing Mr. Erby. Now that I've done that, I'm completely not on the Board of Light and Power for the next comment, okay? I just want to make that clear. The next thing I'm going to say very carefully so people can write it down, the name of the business is UP Property Maintenance LLC. The business owner is a Marquette resident, Mike Perrault, P-E-R-R-A-U-L-T. He can be reached at area code 906-360-2482. And I wanted people to know he is available to do the type of work that you normally have a hard time finding people to do, especially one of the people on Fair Avenue who have a great deal to say about the city plowing, that Mr. Perrault and his team have the tools and the ability to assist them with their plowing concerns and also their sidewalk concerns. Also, in addition, Mr. Perrault and his team are available this month and next month to help anyone who needs some cleanup, that they were going to wait till the spring, but the, the snow hasn't covered it up yet, and they're perfectly prepared to come to your house and help you work in, in the spring and summer. And they also have a unique skill set, and I have been authorized to share this with the team. There is a phenomenon known in nature. It crosses all cultures, all histories, all, all race creed and color. It is referred to as male refrigerator blindness, which is where certain members of certain gender, when sent to look for things, cannot seem to find them. Mr. Perrault has demonstrated to me on more than one occasion that neither he nor any member of his staff suffer from this, and they are willing, in addition to all the other services they do with heavy-duty equipment, to come to any location and, when asked to look for something, look for it until they find it. And I say that because I didn't believe him when he first told me this, and then he located something that I could not find, and then I decided that this was a gift that should be shared. So again, this is a local business, local people. So again, this is a local business, local people, tremendously successful, I've recommended them to everyone I've talked to, and they have time now and ability now, and especially with the shoveling coming up that has been troubling to some people, they're available to be of assistance. I thank you very much. Bye.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Orvalishno, 1802 Kimber, Marquette. I'm not here to give a commercial, so what I would like to say is thank you for the support of the Spring Street property. Once again, we will get some tax base off of this surplus property, just sitting there, gathering dust. Now we're going to get some tax base out of it. The other thing I wanted to say was Downtown Development Association. My daughter and granddaughter come from Green Bay every summer and visit. First thing you want to do is go down to the farmer's market. They want to shop Washington Street, Third Street. They're not here to visit mom and dad or grandma and grandpa, I guess, but they have a good, they have a good time. They spend some money, bring their goodies back to Green Bay, and they're happy about it. That's about all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Let's move on to comments from the Commission. I'm going to start with Commissioner Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one quick comment tonight, and that was just regarding the Habitat project. You know, after, I think it's been about 18 months now since we kind of started this whole process, finally getting over the finish line is, it's good. You know, I worked, I had the privilege of working on a Habitat home earlier this year, which reminded me why I love my desk job, but I do look forward to hopefully being able to help out with a couple of these homes. Yeah, and I'm curious if they could speed up that build time, if they had enough volunteers, so if you actually go to the Habitat website, you can submit a form and, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Otteway?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, with the holidays approaching, I just want to remind the public to be very careful with over-intoxifying yourself. We've seen instances of drinking and driving, and not only that, but marijuana and driving go up in the community, and typically it's this time of year when we see those things happen, so if you're going to partake in those things, please do so safely. Second, the amount of disease that's happening in our county as well as in our state when it comes to COVID, RSV, flu, all of those things are on the rise, so please take care of your neighbors, take care of their children, all of those things. Outside of that, happy holidays to everyone, and please be safe.
Pro Tim Hanley?
Thank you. I want to use my time to say congratulations to Mr. Erby. You've done so much in this community already with all your years of service, including being the best crossing guard that we ever had at Brother Marquette Schools, but I'm very happy to see that you're continuing to serve and have a great time on the Board of Light and Power. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thanks. I just want to kind of follow up on the Habitat. Number one, I want everybody to know how much I do support the Habitat and what they do. My only wish was that we could have gotten something higher-density, so we've got to put more people, especially those that are downtown workers, in more rooms. So that's my, that was my goal, and I fully support moving forward with the eight build over there despite, you know, wishing that it was higher occupancy. Please shop local. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody, whatever you do, please try and keep our local shop owners in mind and give them a shot to earn your hard-earned dough. And Jerry, welcome to the Board of Light and Power. Thank you for serving again. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I have a few things. Right before this meeting, I was able to stop by the Business After Hours with Lakesbury Community Partnership. It was at 906 Adventure Team, if you're not familiar, it's a biking club nonprofit to help get kids on bikes. But my point is, Lakesbury Community Partnership has these Business After Hours a couple times a month, they're free, there's usually food and drink, and just kind of positive, energetic people, it's a great way to kind of learn about a different business or an organization you don't know about, so just kind of that awareness if people haven't gone to those, that those are open to the public. Look on the LSCP website. Next week, our meeting is typically it's second and last Monday, but we have a meeting next Monday because of the holiday, so we're going to do this again next week, so just be prepared, or we'll have an empty room, we'd love to have people here. And then my plea to everyone is do the snow dance. As much as I want to say it selfishly, I'm getting looks already because I love to ski, it's also a huge part of our UP economy when it comes to snowmobilers and skiers and that outdoor recreation piece, and I know that we're already, not necessarily right in the city, but in our greater UP community, there's already places that are suffering because of that, so do the snow dance. Aheki lunta. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, sure, just a couple of things. Earlier this week, Commissioner Schlegel and I happened to be at a listening session for, with Eagle, talking about the Maya Healthy Climate Plan and also some of the carbon pollution reduction grants that are coming up, that the state is looking at, and then some of our local units of government should be able to go after as well. We have a potential for a lot of money to come into the UP to bring in clean energy projects, you know, whether that be on a large scale or, you know, kind of much smaller business and homeowner scale projects, but, you know, to Commissioner, you know, to Jerry Erby and Margaret, you know, with the new energy laws, there's certainly some conversations that are going to have to happen, you know, at our local level with our utilities. So a lot of things energy-wise coming, you know, this year, whether that be from changes in law or otherwise to dollars that might be available to come into our area.
Okay. I would also like to congratulate Jerry Erby on his new appointment to the BLP. You do have some pretty exciting and maybe even some difficult things coming up with the BLP, so we'll be watching that. And not only is he a great crossing guard, he also knows how to put on a Fourth of July parade, and, you know, thank you for all of the things that you have done in the community, we're looking forward to your additional service. And we're just wondering, City Manager, if you could address the idea of opening up Cliffsdale property and also mentioning the Spring Street parking? And I'll turn it over to you.
Certainly. So, at this point, we are currently in negotiations with the state of Michigan regarding the sale of Cliffsdale property because that has not been complete and that was not sold to any other party prior to this. So at this point, and also because of the environmental concerns that we do have there and the monitoring that we are currently doing on that site, it's not something that we are having open to the public at this point. It's not saying that it is something that we should ultimately never set foot on, it is just not the use that we have right now, and I can certainly be more prepared to speak on that at the next meeting or in a separate communication as well, if you'd like. And then in regards to the Spring Street parking lot, there is a development agreement currently in place right now that there is a timeframe where the developer will need to commence a development on that, and I do believe we are coming up on one of the last years for that, so something will need to be submitted soon, but I think that there's quite a few conversations happening right now on that property and a couple of other properties in that area to make some of the biggest impact for any development, and I do believe that there's some components there for commercial, retail or, and/or residential, I'm not entirely sure though. So it's something that's in the works right now, and they are still in compliance with their development agreement at this point. And I do, I do believe that's all I have, I don't have any other announcements. Thank you.
Excuse me. Do you have office hours coming up soon?
Oh, you know what, thank you very much. We do, I do have office hours this Wednesday. It's, I think I'm still in shock that it's December right now, so office hours, community office hours will be on December 13th, which is Wednesday, from 10 to noon, and it will be at Peter White Public Library. I do believe it's upstairs now because we were having such a large attendance, and this is just a casual opportunity to come in, have a cup of coffee, talk about, if you have something specific, or talk just in general about city with other community members, not very formal. People do take the opportunity to kind of discuss some of their personal, either issues or compliments, because they do come in quite a bit to talk about the great things that we have here, so don't be afraid if you do have other people sitting in on that, you can still talk about your specific topic, or just come in and see what is going on in Marquette, because I'm happy to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is concluded at 7:15 PM.